Sure we're adjourned? We'll move into the next one. This is the actual work session. I'm going to skip around the desk as Carrie is with us and I'm sure she'd like to get home to her family. So the first thing in the business is your first glance at the budget. And just to give you a bit of a heads up, we will have another special work session on December the 2nd so that we will focus only on the budget and then we will have a chance to talk about it again in the December work session. And then I'll be asking you to approve it in the December regular meeting so that when the new year starts, we're all set and ready to go. So Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
This handout I gave you does specifically state that this is a budget work in process. I'll still be making changes right up probably to the day of the council meeting. We'll be making changes mostly to benefits after we find out the important... That'll make some changes to it and I'll probably be making some changes to sales tax, projected sales tax revenue as well. We get our third payment. That includes the internet sales tax. So on page one is the revenues budget. And as you can see, sales tax, I have projected to go up 7.43 percent. Planning permits also is a pretty significant increase, but it's a small dollar amount. So the increase is...
Because of fee increases? Is that because of fee increases?
No, that would be in building inspection fees, but this is just a small little line item for miscellaneous fees. It doesn't really account for much, $11,000.
So does this anticipate additional building permits over...
The line up above that does. Building inspection fees anticipates an increase of $32,000 over what was budgeted for 2019.
These are just permits then for planning?
Yes.
Or if they're going to build a fence or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. They don't...
I'm projecting property tax revenues to increase 8.26 percent. You'll notice that we're continuing to see a very significant decline in franchise fees. That's due mostly because of the cable, people cutting off their cable. And we're seeing a big decline in AT&amp;T internet franchise fees as well.
Are you saying cutting off the cable, cutting off COX service, the local cable provider?
Yes, it is COX.
So the current franchise fee is four and a quarter percent on the bill, which is standard with most cities. And that gives the right to the carrier to be able to cross our easements and bring service in. And so the POA pays it on the water, for example, and you probably know that from the days there. AT&amp;T pays it, COX pays it. A few months ago, if you remember correctly, we went into a franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy for that new restaurant that's opening up down there. So the franchise fees, on the one hand, are healthy, but you've got to watch that declining balance because people are now unplugging and they're not using the carriers anymore.
And Mayor, hasn't this been a trend that we've seen now for a couple of years?
Yes, the last three years now.
So is people just going to streaming services?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Any questions on revenues?
Well, just a comment really. I mean, I think all in all, looking at the revenues for the city compared to the budget last year, up 4.62 percent down there at the bottom line. This is really kind of a healthy growth rate as far as revenues go.
Yes.
And the majority of it is attributable to the sales tax. And I think probably a large portion of that with this new law that requires the big online retailers to collect sales tax accurately for the vocal of the buyer.
Definitely.
And so that's really something that's working in our favor. And I'd like to think that with a 4.6 percent increase in revenue, that this speaks well again for the city's financial position and allows us to do some of the things that we need to do to kind of keep up with the growth in our community.
And remember, we've only had two points.
Right, two data points, yeah. Not a trend yet.
Two data points, it's just a line.
I know.
And this month, we'll begin to see if there's a trend with the third data point.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons why we're just waiting so long before we finalize it. I will tell you that I have a call in to Mark Hayes with respect to the street fund on turnback. I was talking to Judge Moore recently. He saw an increase at the county level of $400,000. And he puts it to the new diesel tax, or sorry, gas tax and diesel tax. And I have yet to hear from Mark. I tried to get him again today because they had said that the turnback for cities was going to be flat year over year. Why is the county? So stand by for more. If I get any kind of new info from Mark, I'll pass it along to you.
This revenue increase, I'm kind of trying to focus on the good news here too. This property tax revenue increase of 200, over $200,000 from what was budgeted last year to what we're going to budget for next year. An 8.26 percent increase in property tax, that's again a sign of good health, I think, in growth.
And that's an increase in budget.
I know.
And that's because I'm seeing such a surplus in actual, over budgeted.
It is.
Yes.
I was going to ask him.
Yes.
If we were comparing to actuals current year.
Yes.
It's even better.
Yes.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Has the final tally come in for the October 15 deadline, what was collected?
No, it's too early yet. I want to see it yet. We're hoping the end of this month. I did spend the better part of the morning down with the county assessor and his team, just going down the rabbit hole a bit to make sure that everything is being captured to better understand how they're actually doing the assessment, what's involved. And they are now able to give us a report, which we will be using every year, which nails exactly what the property tax will be because on January 1st of every year, that's when they know what it's going to be for the next year. Because anything that's brand new and is on the books and ready to go, on January 1st, they cut it off and that's it. And so what you've also got in here is personal property, cars, that kind of thing. That is not fixed. That tends to be a bit of a roller coaster. But again, when you put a trend line over it, we still see some growth.
With the personal property tax, there was this nap, who, and I don't know if it was all over Arkansas, but certainly it was in Benton County because we all got a notice about it that we were going to get a bump on our personal property for vehicles particularly.
Correct.
And will we see additional revenue as a result of that?
We should.
Yes, yes, we will. In fact, we saw it go down. And so Carrie went to county and at that point, they had no idea what it was. They were still investigating. And what was happening was, I guess, the state puts a value on all vehicles into the system and they put the wrong values in. They were too low. And so when people were coming to renew, the revenue wasn't there as anticipated. So they, in turn, started to peel back the onion and long behold, they found that the rates were wrong at the state level. So the state had to go in and fix it. Actually Benton County went in and fixed it first because it was going to take too long for the state to do it. So Rodstein did it. And yes, we should be seeing that money coming back.
Will that be in this facility or next?
That's hard to know. I don't know.
Because I don't know that I've gotten a bill for that change in evaluations.
Yeah.
You won't tell next year.
I think it would only affect next year's ballot.
I suspect it's announced.
Because that was just announced, yeah.
It was a valuation change, not a tax change, so.
I got the impression they're going to back collect.
I didn't get what I was...
I don't think so.
I don't think so, no.
It's not what I read. So on the city's sales tax, we're talking like $17,600 a month. It's pretty healthy. And you know what? I'm not discounting that. I don't know. What, the first two months we have, right? What were those numbers? I didn't bring my... I didn't bring my August 31 sheet in here.
Let me go over, since we're talking about this particular issue, this has not come up before and I don't know that it would. But in Arkansas, there's a cap on the increase of property tax that can occur after a reappraisal. Now, that's not because of new construction. It's after a reappraisal. Now, we had one of these happen back in the late 90s, early 2000. It's called a rollback. So what happens is that if, when they reappraise and it's determined that the taxes are going to go up more than 10 percent, then all the taxing entities have a legal obligation to reduce the millage such that the increase is not more than 10 percent. So I don't, that's not going to happen here and that's not because of new construction. New construction's added on, but that's because of countywide reappraisal. I don't know with some of the property that's skyrocketing in the Bentonville area, I don't know what that means in terms of the whole county. We had a big issue about that probably 15 or so years ago because the rollback was not calculated correctly and there was a big lawsuit. I don't know if you lived here at the time, but everybody got these forms in the mail and you were asked to disclaim your property tax rebate to benefit the schools and all this. This is many years ago. But in any event, there are times when the law is such that you would be required to reduce your millage in order to, that the collections do not exceed 10 percent based on a reappraisal. So if I come to you with that one these days, it's like, what?
Reappraisal?
The next reappraisal will be in 2021.
Yeah, we have some time.
Right. So this is built on the 10 percent cap that Jason is mentioning because the county is very conservative. And it's a homestead cap. And there's two ways to get it. One is after your home is built and it's assessed, and then you're in the middle of the assessment five-year plan, it won't go up more than 10 percent because that's the homestead rule. If you're over the age of 65, you can apply and it never goes up again until you sell. And it's the same thing with your home, even if you're under 65, and you end up selling it and the next person coming in, the tax will be at the next level. And then it's, and then the bar is set again for the next five years. So in 2021, they will be doing the entire county and they'll be doing the reassessment. And I suspect John, who sits on the evaluation board, will be a very busy boy. But that's part of the exercise that he took me through.
Boy, another benefit to being 65. I can hardly wait. Yeah, so anyway, on the city, I mean, yeah, city sales tax, you know, it says $17,600 a month. Now, that's pretty healthy. Is that bad?
You're saying the increase is $17,000?
Yeah, $211,000 divided by 12. And then the county is $35,300 a month. So that's, these are some pretty healthy numbers. I'm not discounting that because I know the first couple of months came in pretty strong.
Are you talking just about internet tax?
No, this is the city's sales tax. 2.3 million this year or is 2.1 million last year? That's a difference of $211,000.
Are you talking about the increase? Okay. I'm talking about the increase. I thought you were talking about the whole.
Yeah, a big number. I mean, because I'm just saying, that's a big number.
Strong.
Lot larger than what we're used to seeing in certain ones, you know? So, yeah. Hope the trend continues.
Yes.
It will. Once we have a recession.
Okay. It'll take us into...
Okay, the next page, page two, is general fund expenditures for admin, HR, legal, IT, community development and court with the remaining departments on page three, police, fire and library. I have put some notes on page four that reference the cell number. If you're interested in a certain increase or decrease, the answer probably is on page four. But the main changes to our expenditures budget are the health insurance increase. We have safer grant changes, our reimbursement. The safer grant has gone down, which I think was mentioned in an earlier meeting. On page three, you'll see that the library's expenses are increased significantly. That's due to their expansion. We have in admin, we're minus 2.5 employees. We've actually reduced employees in the admin department. We've added one additional employee in...
You've reduced all of them?
Yeah.
For the force?
Yeah. Two additional employees in police.
Same ID?
You'll notice that utilities expense decreased in every department but IT and that's because we rolled telephone and internet, cell phones, cable expenses all over the So those two pages, page two and three, are just a demo file. And there's basic operating expenditures. They don't fluctuate much except for the irons that I mentioned.
So what is our business with this relative to the next regular session? Are we doing anything? This is our first opportunity.
This is your first opportunity. So typically, what you would do is you'd take this home and you'd look at it. And then if you want to get more information, because there's a ton of information behind all of this. If I printed it out, it would be about that thick. And that's your op, so now it's your opportunity to meet with the department heads, to sit with Carrie and go through your thoughts, questions, et cetera. So that by the time December 2nd, special meeting comes around, you may have more questions that I'm sure the whole group would benefit from. And then after that, we're then into the regular routine. It's a work session. We may or may not talk much about it because all the questions have been answered, all the tweaks should be finished by then, and then we just roll into approval and away we go. And we try to give as much upfront time as possible so that everybody has a chance to digest it, to look at it and to ask the questions that they need answered. And then we get a chance to put all those questions on the table in a special session.
Do you still have your spreadsheet you're working off with the trending? And you know, it's been over a lot, what, five years or something like that, that we can, you can mail out? Because it comes through okay when you send it to me, so I'd like to...
It's not too big?
No. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I guess I have a real concern about the last page.
Page number...
No, it's 12.
Oh, the very last page. Then we, you want to...
I'd like to exclude that out of the budget completely for two reasons really.
What is it?
The last page.
Page 12, the water equipment.
For two reasons. One, the mini excavator is not wanting to, with the equipment currently there.
And these are your numbers? You realize that?
No, these are not my numbers.
You said we needed an excavator and trailer.
No, these are Mike's numbers.
No, these numbers came from Mike.
Okay.
They didn't come from me. And I've commented about this request in the 20 budget for a number of times. It needs to be eliminated because that piece of equipment is not wanted or needed by the utility in the event that you choose to move in that direction.
So...
The second thing, second thing is, is that, okay, the truck is taken out, but the excavator is not something the utility needs.
Did you talk to Mike?
And that's not up to me.
I have not talked to Mike. Mike is better than me in terms of talking about it.
Because I don't like...
Mike is still insisting that he does need that and so that'll be...
Well, he actually does not need that from someone who's managed a bunch of utilities.
Does he need it from the street department?
They need it for the street department. That's a whole different story.
Now, he has, he has some, they're already asked for.
Because the tractor backhoes that they use, you see them pulling them around town on the trailers, the tractor backhoes, if they're loaded on one end, backhoe on the other end is the traditional piece of equipment that all of the utilities around us use. Now, if you have a large enough utility where you have enough work and enough revenue, then maybe you will have a mini excavator. Maybe.
This might be a good time for me to kind of talk a little bit about process because certainly there are times when the council may, you know, have no problem with any of it except a few handful of items. And so certainly you can move to amend this proposal as you see fit. Those amendments would need to be in writing, just like all of our other amendments. And so, you know, I'm not trying to presuppose, but let's say, Larry, you wanted to move to amend, when this gets to a resolution, it's time to vote. You want to move it to eliminate that. So you would be eliminating the $66,000 out of spending and I guess you probably just, you'd have to add the $66,000 back to reserve or whatever county we go back into.
But it would be a lot smarter to talk to Mike now and then let's have a bow out so we don't get into that.
Because it has been adjusted down from $108,000, so it is a bit of a curve from what was...
The truck was being double counted.
You want to move into capital?
No, it's page five. That's the street department, street fund summary of their expenditures, budget expenditures. Mike has requested one additional employee, a new mechanic, an additional mechanic.
The increase in benefits on that one, and we can talk to him on that, is that because he's just going to have more people taking advantage of the benefits program?
Yes, and that number will change once we know what people have enrolled in.
And it's due also to the additional employees?
Right.
Yeah, but it's not portion.
And, you know, it's due also maybe the 2019 budget. We're comparing budget to budget, not budget to actuals.
Right. There's also a tendency to go for the younger people to not worry about a health savings plan and tend to go to the other ones which may have a larger price tag, which is an interesting thing to watch.
Okay, on page seven is a summary of the capital projects. I listed what we already budgeted for 2019 and in the green highlighted column is 2020. And then the pages that follow that are the detail pages of each project for 2020. So they will tie back to that. This is also a summary, if you'll note, on line 37, row 37, column E, we have our projected beginning reserve balance of $4.9 million. And then row 38, we have the projected revenues that ties back to your revenue page of $16 million. Row 39 has the projected expenditures of $16 million as well. We are operating at, our operating costs are staying within our revenues, which is necessary for good financial statements.
Where's that at, Carrie?
Line 40, oh, page seven.
Page seven, line 31.
Line 31 shows we have the operating, we budgeted for an operating revenue of $30,000. And then line 42 is the 1.066 of budgeted capital projects, which matches line 35, giving us a net contribution or actually a use of unrestricted reserves on line 45 of 1.36 million, or 0.36 million, which leaves us with an ending reserve balance of $3.9 million, which is 24.61 percent of revenues. So that rounded up would put us within our policy of staying at 25 percent.
No lower than 25 percent of operating budget.
The projected revenues.
Projected revenues.
I'll tell you what you don't see is the next four years, which is not good.
No, the next four years.
The next four years are going to be very tough.
But they've already seen that in an earlier meeting.
So Carrie, I'm, one kind of a broad stroke question looking at it for the first time. The, and you may be addressing it, and I hope I can ask this correctly, but we were talking about the revenues, the increase of budget for 2020 over what was budgeted in 20, in the current year, is 4.62 percent. So revenue's gone up by 4.62 percent.
And the expenditures went up 6 percent.
Right. So let's talk about that for a minute. Why is that a good idea? Why would our expenditure go up more than...
Well, for things out of our control, like medical insurance.
Right, but it's not, so where would that, if 4.6 percent of that 6 percent gain or the majority of it's going to come from additional revenues, where does the rest of it come from?
Comes from, it's still your revenues, even though they've gone up less of a percent than expenditures, the dollar amount exceeds expenditures.
Is it fair to say that all of our net increase in expenditures is covered by the net increase in revenues?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Yes. And that is one thing that bond underwriters want to see is that, is that a municipality has not budgeted for an excess of operating expenditures over their revenues. Capital is another thing. You can dip into reserves for your capital. So that's why I break it out this way.
So again, you've got a breakdown, as Carrie mentioned, on the following pages for each of the capitals so that you can have a look at it, digest it. For example, if you want to see Chief Sims and talk to him about, you know, the flatbed for old ambulance chassis to mount brush fire skid, he can actually show you one that we did once before. When he talks about mounting the ambulance, if you are not sure what a remount of an ambulance is, this would be the time to go and speak with Chief.
I have another question about the capital projects. Line 37 shows that audited trajectory beginning unrestricted reserve, unrestricted reserve balance. In 19, we ended up with $7.8 million. And in 20, we only end up just shy of $5 million. Where did that?
At 19...
We're looking at, we're looking at spending $2 million less in capital projects.
Well, the $4.9 million comes from the calculation of the end of 2019 on line 46.
So that number has been carried forward?
Yes. It's the beginning, on line 37, it's the beginning balance that we're starting with. The 2019 number of $7.8 million is the audited number. Our 2018 ending balance is our 2019 beginning balance.
Okay.
And that is from our audit that you just approved last month.
So what it says on line 44, 43 really, 45, is that we spent 2.8 to almost 2.9 million additional...
You approved a budget for, yes.
Over and above unrestricted.
You approved a budget last year that ate into restricted reserves by 2.8 million. That's right. Because at that time, we had such an excess reserve balance that the taxpayers would have expected us to spend.
Well, as opposed to more, reserves are always good.
They are, and that's why we've set the limit at 25 percent. But we budgeted, our budget last year put us at 33 percent by the end of this year.
So the breakdown for that 2.8 or 2.9 million additional... So the breakdown for that 2.8, or 2.9 million additional, where would we find that, where does that show up?
That is adding all of the lines above it. That is the sum of net operating revenue on line 41 of 148,000, minus approved capital expenditures for 2019 of 3.156 million. And then, 35,000 of our 2019 budget is being moved over to 2020, because it won't be spent. And then we have legitimate savings on line 44 from our 2019 budget of 83,000. So I've added that back to give us a net contribution or use of unrestricted reserves of 2.8 million. And when you take that minus your beginning balance of 7.8 million, it leaves you an ending balance of 4.9 million.
So, and when I back up now on 2019, I look at lines 21 to 23.
21.
Mercy Way Bridge.
That was budgeted, yes. We budgeted those amounts.
And where's our savings for the 1.25 million that we got from?
That is in line 44. Those amounts, utilities and right-of-way of 46,000, or 37,000, and phase three of that, which is on line 23 of 46,000, we will not be spending that, and that is reflected in line 44.
Coming out of 2019, actual, aren't we pretty healthy, though? Aren't we going to have some money roll in to 2020 to make that restricted balance better than what it's showing here? Because this is budget versus budget.
We will have 4.9 million coming into 2020.
That would be, so, anyway, I'm just saying, the numbers are going to be more healthy than what it looks like on the head page, because it's not budget versus.
We'll be coming into 2020 with 33% of projected revenues. And then we're going to spin down in 2020 to 24%, 24.6%.
So what would we have done had we not gotten the grant from Walton Family Foundation?
We would have had to eliminate that project and eaten what we've already spent. And the 119,000 was only our 20%. The rest of that project for line 21, which is the design phase, the rest of that
The construction phase.
Was to be covered by the grant.
The construction phase was about a million and a half.
Right, but that was, that was the combined cost. That was grant, well, the construction phase was much more than a million and a half.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
That was our piece of the pie.
But for 2019, we only expected to spend 25,000 for 46,000, I'm sorry, line 23. The other portion in our five-year plan before we got the grant, the other portion was showing in 2020 and 2021, but it's gone now.
When will we see this projected out to now 2025, 2026?
I have it already. But there won't be anything for Mercy Bridge on there.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
And I pause that, so for 2019, though, we're not spending our budget, right, on salary, benefits, operating, whatever, I mean, we're.
So far, we are working out a surplus, yes.
That's what I mean, which will roll over into this.
That's true.
Just figure that we're not seeing right here, right now.
And then I will change line 37.
And I'm not asking you to change it, I'm just saying, I understand what you're doing here.
No, I won't be able to change it until next year, but line 37 will change to the audited beginning balance.
The actual balance.
Identified by the audit.
But that, that will take until next year, later.
I got it, but we'll be in better shape than what this is reflecting.
Let's hope so.
Well, we will.
Let's hope so.
We're trying to, we budgeted, we budgeted tight this year, and we've really budgeted tight for 2020.
Well, and at the same time, we're able to take some of the good fortune of our revenue sales increases, and the mayor and the staff, I assume, have looked across the city and tried to figure out, what do we need to do better, what do we need to do that we're not doing today? So whether it's, we can do better on roads, we can do better on public safety, we can do better on code enforcement, these, this is part of the evolution and the growth of the city to identify these needs and to match it up with our good fortune of having additional revenues. This is, this is the city's recommendation for how we utilize those additional funds.
Yes, and remember that, that's actually a good point. A budget is a recommendation, a budget is a guiding message, if you like. But as we all know, you're either going to be under, you're going to be over, and things will change.
It captures spending, and it estimates your revenue. And if your revenue is not sufficient, you have to bring your spending manuals, it has to balance. And it is an appropriation, budget in the city is an appropriation, so to be budgeted is to be authorized to be spent, but it is a cap on the spending. And then if recession hits mid-year and tax revenues are down 30%, then you would have to amend the budget and take some expenses out to meet your balance there, requiring it from the end of the year.
Because we have the fiscal policy that says, if things go bad, and it's going down, this is what you must do. And it talks about the cutting and everything else.
If not for the internet sales tax, though, we and probably all the municipalities would have to decrease their police and fire coverage, their street coverage, I mean, that saved us, saved us.
That's why, as you see, under new business, there's a resolution that talks about supporting the 1/2% sales tax for state highways and bridges, county roads, and it comes back to us as well. That's crucial if we're going to stay ahead of our streets, especially for us, because we have so many miles of streets that other entities don't have. That's being asked by the AML for every city to propose this.
It's about $400,000 a year, gain for us. Gain is just a continuation.
Continuation.
It's a gain. Because if the tax goes away, it's gone. Okay, it's got two more years to run. When they put it up to a vote this year, they're not going to put an end on it, they're just going to put it out there and hope, and anyone have to go back after it. So it's extra, it's not guaranteed. Carrie, all of the items in each of the departments are summaries by category, payroll and allowance, benefits, grants, contracts.
Right.
MNR operations. Is there a breakdown for those available?
Yes.
It's in the, we used to call it book of books, but now it's electronic.
It's in a spreadsheet, Larry, that's what I was just referring to.
Each department has very detailed breakdown for each one of these items.
And anytime that we made a move or made a decision, then Carrie's put a no again beside each one of them, so that we can track it and follow it. And that's all, that's all of what I would like you to do next now, is to go home, look at it, put your questions together, and then meet with Carrie and meet with the department heads, so that come December 2nd, you're feeling very comfortable with the way that it was put together, and the questions that you've been asking, and then we'll have a chance for everybody to put their questions on the table. Very important that everybody goes into next year, and I say this every year, understanding how the bill was put together. And it is much easier than when I first came in here and it was eraser, pencil, and paper. Carrie, thank you. We'll let you get home to your family. Okay, thanks for your questions. The first piece of old business is an ordinance calling in a special election in the city of Bellevista, Arkansas, on questions of issuing bonds. We've spent a goodly amount of time, especially in the last session, talking about this. Ryan Bowman from our bond council will be available for us next week at our regular meeting. And I have made one presentation, at least one presentation, since we last talked about this, and it was to a meet and greet that was held over at the country club last Saturday. It's something that Tom Judson and I do on a quarterly basis with Deb Sorensen, and all new residents for the past three months, and it usually goes back longer than that, are invited to join us. And Tom does his thing on the DOA, I talk about the city. And so one of the things I talked about this time, of course, is the bond issue for the projects that we've been talking about. Steve was with me, and I didn't have any pushback, in fact, I had one lady come up at the end and congratulate the city, and that's all of us, for looking to the future, staying to the future, so that we're not playing catch-up at the bottom. Steve, any thoughts from that presentation? Does anybody have any comments?
This will be second reading, it'll be identical to the one you had this past meeting. So as we said before, I think we've kind of talked about all various alternatives, various potentials to take away, add to, change, all that. I think, I think we got the idea there was a consensus on all that, but just keep in mind that if there are going to be some changes, Ryan is going to, one time, to draft that and come back to you in December with something that would reflect that modification.
And then resets back to the first reading.
Yeah, so you would need to accelerate for sure in December in order to make your March goals for election.
Or if someone is so inclined, you could accelerate it this month, and you can talk about it. It's entirely up to you.
I will be recommending we suspend the rules until the third.
If President Addo, initially, you know, I was, had a little bit of an issue, you know, maybe combining both the fire together, because, you know, we all talk to people, right? And after talking to Chief Sims and sorting all that out, you know, I'm comfortable with it now. All I will say is, I think it's really important to get the messaging right, because there are a lot of benefits to a fire training station that are really important to communicate. Because a lot of people, they really don't understand, you know, they question, well, why can't we go somewhere else? Well, it's a lot more than just that, so.
The Citizens Committee is meeting again, it's tomorrow, and that'll be an opportunity for them now to find a chairman, a vice chairman, and to begin to put the plan together. One gentleman has already said that he's more than willing to put a video together of a walkthrough for the police station and also for the fire station. Dave Barfield, some of you know, came in and spent about 45 minutes talking to Chief Sims, again, about the fire training tower. And he was at the presentation that I made on Saturday, and at the end of it, he said, I want to sign up to be part of the committee. So he'll be there for the first time tomorrow as well. So just stay on target, stay on message, absolutely.
I think we had Chief Sims kind of do a complete review of the necessity for this from the fire chief's point of view, and I think that was really useful, and it gets recorded, and is out there for, for people to consider it.
I think the timing would be good for Chief Graves, he stepped out, so I feel very comfortable.
So if you leave the room, then you give stuff to the adjutant.
That he might do the same thing.
Sure.
At a coming regular session meeting. I think that's useful, I think it's the right forum for that kind of presentation to be made. I think Chief Sims was effective in how he did it, and I think it'd be a good idea for Chief Graves to do the same.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more, we'll move on to the next, which is a resolution, it's old business going back many months, expressing the intent of the city council to no longer pursue purchase of a portion of the central water system in accordance with the memorandum of understanding that's currently in place.
Mayor, can I introduce someone? We've got John Bryan here with Mitchell Williams. As you all know, we've had Michelle Allgood and Jill Grandley assisting us, and they're two people, and they had to be in three places. And so, John has come up to be there for, represent Mitchell Williams, represent us, and to also help us address whatever may come up tonight.
Great, thanks for coming up.
And thank him for coming, Brian. From Little Rock?
Yes.
So.
We'll see.
Depends on how much you want to talk.
So Mitchell Williams put this together, and it was sent out to you. What caught my eye the most was probably page six, available legal protection of a water service area, and first paragraph, top of the middle, to protect hostile acquisition, acquisition of a water service area is, that is the statute. This protection results when the USDA has lent money to an operator to finance the purchase of or improvements to a water system. And in the next paragraph, it says, Mitchell Williams and other professionals engaged by Bellevista have confirmed that Bellevista will not meet the criteria for obtaining USDA financing and cannot utilize this legal protection. That, to me, is a showstopper. So, a few things for you. I met with Mayor Maddox today, and I asked him what is his intent. If they lose the current appeal, they will probably go to the Supreme Court, and that will probably take a year, maybe?
Well, worst case, a year, but I would say six or seven months, easy.
Okay. He, not he, but the city of Gravett has the right, because we will not have protection to approach us, and we will have to sell.
Well.
Provided, let me finish, please.
Just let him finish, Larry, and we can go on.
Okay. Provided that they can provide a water source. They have engineered a water source and are ready to go to bond, and they are going to bring water up. And the bottom line is, when you start panning it out, we could own it for two years and then lose it. That, to me, is not a good expenditure of taxpayer dollars. What I would like to propose to you is something that I have spoken to a couple of you, is let's go back to square one, and we would have to file all over again to get our certification as a water district, but let's do some long-range planning, short-range planning as well, to see where we can get the best bang for the buck. The most obvious to me is the retail along the west side of 71, which is serviced by Wells. And it starts with John Hutchison, it actually starts with Mrs. Sweet's building on the south side, shaped a bit like a turret. Then John Hutchison owns the next strip mall. The Village Insurance is owned by Doug Bachman, and he actually gets his water from John. The next strip, as well as the State Farm Insurance and the.
VCR?
Thank you. Is owned by Linda Parnell. And then we get into the bottom area across from Dr. Yose, and that's owned by Betty.
Betty Garcia.
Betty Garcia, who has an investor who was willing to buy it. He is someone who has invested many times in Bellevista over the years, he's a gentleman from Israel, and he has recognized the need for a hotel there, which I've heard of people say as well. So today, I also contacted John Hutchison and Linda Parnell, Doug Bachman, and I said to them, if you had the ability to have Beaver Lake water, would you take it, or would you stick with your well? And every one of them said, I would take Beaver, have Beaver Lake water, because then I. I can expand my business and also my shops now are becoming much more attractive, especially for a restaurant. When I spoke to Linda Parnell, she reminded me that they have bought the 50-odd acres behind that strip mall and they would like to develop it. Their big holdback is water. And when I spoke to the Israeli, which was a couple of weeks ago, he said his big holdup is water. Now Betty does have, excuse me, a water source from the P O A, but it's only for residential and Cooper communities will not allow her to have anymore. That to me is just ripe and waiting for some good investment. So I approached Bentonville, Mike Bender, who's the director of their public works. Would you be willing to entertain a discussion with us on the possibility of obtaining water coming up 71? And he said yes. And I said, who would be part of the discussion on your end? It would be Mayor Arman himself and the fellow who looks after his water. I think this is worth exploring. I really, really do. There are immediate benefits, I guess immediate, I mean, you won't have the water in right away. But this is something that we can focus in on and generate some more tax income. Hopefully Linda would then begin to take that parcel behind her and start to develop it. And then Betty can sell her land to the Israeli gentleman and we might just get our first hotel right on the main thoroughfare through the city. This just makes a whole bunch of sense to me. And I would certainly support that move forward. We should also look, I think, at where does water not exist today where it might exist tomorrow? And for example, the Wonderland Cave doesn't have the water. It only came into the city maybe three years ago when the ladies self-annexed before they sold it to the Walton boys. It would need water. We've got other areas, the pockets or the islands, as we call them. We've never really sat down and explored, how do you get water to them? What does it mean? Are they areas where there might be economic growth or is it all residential? We don't know. Certainly I don't know. So my thought to you is, let's walk away from this deal. It doesn't mean we can't come back to the table. It all depends what's going to happen over the next few years. Because as Mayor Maddox said to me today, he said, Peter, there's only $100,000 left on that bond. Centerton will eventually pay off. So that's another time when we would come. And I said, when do you think they'll pay it off? He said, probably within the next two or three years. Suddenly, they no longer have it either. It just, it doesn't feel right from a business perspective when we have all the opportunity sitting in front of us down on 71 to make it better for the existing merchants and frankly to make it better for our residents by having more amenities than everybody has been asking for. I don't think any of us would ever suggest that we would put a hotel up in Hawassee somewhere down around 279. There's just, there's no reason for it to be there. But there is a reason for it to be down right on 271, sorry, on 71, right by Oldham. That to me just makes a whole bunch of sense. There was a reason that Walmart wanted to put a neighborhood services there or neighborhood market there. It's right on the main thoroughfare. Even they at that point didn't have water figured out. But that is my suggestion to you, is let's start again. We have gained some valuable experience by some people around this table who have put a great deal of effort into exploring, what does it mean to set up a water system? Let's take that knowledge to our advantage. And let's now look at not only 71, but our other areas and keep this in our mind too. Let's keep watching it. Let's find out what happens. But that is my recommendation to you. There is no rush. We don't have to go at it gangbusters. Linda, you wanted to say something?
One of the reasons the neighborhood market got deep six was that the state said we absolutely positively could not have a traffic light at 71 in Oldham. We're certainly not going to have a hotel without a traffic light there.
Things change.
No, I understand things change.
They said no to a traffic light at Kingsland and we've got one going in.
Remember this, that the whole issue of the rezoning was subject to a referendum petition, which, and the people voted down the rezoning. That killed it. Now, they hadn't gotten to step two yet, but they may have had difficulty with that as well.
But the traffic signal decision came down between the start of early voting and election day. So that all got messed up.
I just wanted to provide one point of clarity on the legal side. And of course, John, if he wants to chime in, that's, he's welcome to. But that portion that Gravit could, could claim is only that portion in the city of Gravit. So that would leave in Belavista, that part from the city limits on up and whatever else is in the city of Belavista. Gravit cannot make a claim on that. It would only be that portion that would be in the city of Gravit, which is concludes all of Hawassee up to our city limits there on the highways.
And Kurt did acknowledge that today. And he said, if need be, he said, I don't necessarily want that line going into Belavista. It's of no interest to me. But he said, I would like to work with you to help you develop it if you think there's going to be more retail, more buildup. There's not a lot there because then you hit P O A water as soon as you hit the craft fair limits.
Did he mention anything about a sewer expansion in that area?
No.
Oh, no.
But they did have a public hearing for sewer expansion.
Yep.
Well, it's not an expansion, it's a sewer.
Sewer service area. Hawassee property is what they were asking for. And in the big picture, they did ask for designation of their entire corporate limits to be designated as their sewer service area. At the public hearing, it was clear that that was not something well received and likely would not be approved. Approval to Hawassee, yes, but to give them cart launch.
To go further, more, for example, they would not.
Not likely at this point.
So anyway, I've spent a great deal of time looking at this, thinking about it, looking at other opportunities. I truly believe in my heart of hearts that that area down on Highway 71 would be just so great for our residents to finally try and get some more amenities that we so desperately So anybody else have any thoughts?
You drove all the way from Little Rock. Is there anything you would add to this?
No, I mean, really, I'm, I can't really advocate one way or the, or the other, but I can answer, you know, questions. I think everything that's been said to this point is actually, you know, accurate from a legal standpoint.
One of the things that, that Mitchell Williams brought to the table, which was very important, and I wanted this as well. We want objective information given to you, not information that sounds like we're trying to push you to go one way or the other. Now, the, the information may itself lend you to think you can need to go one way or another, but that is not our goal. And so we wanted to make sure we could provide you objective information as accurately as we could, taking into account what's happened, all the various scenarios, discussion points, questions that have come up over this, you know, it's been over three years since the initial letter of intent was executed. So that's what their effort was in this. I know Michelle and I, Michelle Allgood with Mitchell Williams and myself have had multiple phone calls, consulting, brainstorming, thinking about alternatives, thinking about implications, what if this, what if that. I, I think that, and I would just have to thank Mitchell Williams because they do bring an extreme amount of expertise to the table. They're one of the biggest and best law firms in the state of Arkansas. Okay, I'm not saying that because he's sitting here, it's just a matter of fact. And so I feel very comfortable that you have the information from a legal standpoint as to where this stands with this information that you have in front of you.
I have another question. In the scenario you presented where Gravit, in say, two years or so, could come after that portion, what establishes the price?
Well, there would be a negotiation that would have to take place. And if, by the statute, if we were unable to come to agreement, eventually we'd have to go to court. It almost would work like a condemnation to a certain extent. Because there, there are multiple factors. I'll tell you, one factor to me that would be curious is that our main tap would be within that area of Gravit.
Right, that was my next question.
And then, and then the part, necessary part of that negotiation appear to need to be. If I'm, you know, if we do this, I'm going to be advocating. Because if y'all give the word go, then we're going to be advocating to go and do it the best way we can, would be, you know, eventually, the, the initial idea was to expand that pipe and get more source up, up through the corridor so that we can provide fire protection, not just buy it and hold it, but to eventually maybe do some revenue bonds or something. We're going to have to be able to expand back to a point that's going to be within that Gravit area. And that would all be part of negotiation. I don't know where they would stand on that, but because our, our source meter is going to be way back, I don't think we'd want to move that meter up unless we had some assurances from Gravit that we're going to be able to work with them to get more source in there and, and be able to work and expand the system on up into Belavista when and if that time You know, the thing, unfortunately, because of the poor relationship between Centerton and Gravit on this issue, if there had been a better working relationship or discussion, it would be nice to have had Gravit, Centerton, and Belavista at a three-sided table with a big map, and here are our needs, and here's what we want to do, and here's, and let's just be honest, we're not going to let you get back out to that bypass, but we understand what you need to do. And have it out in a kind way, that could, it, it might be that we could not reach a agreement and we'd end up back where we are, I don't know. But the parties have not been willing to do that between Gravit and Centerton. Gravit, in all honesty, has litigated and delayed, hoping that we would back off. That's absolutely the case. Because they have, they have a desire to maintain that property in the city of Gravit, to maintain their connection to the Belavista bypass, to maintain that property for potential sales tax development within their city, and all the reasons that might be appealing to us in the future, depending on how we decide to move forward with water. And so we all know what the stakes are. And so I, I think though, that if Gravit has a source of water, which they can get to that area, they're going to have all that area in Hawassee and there's not going to really be anything we can do about it. And they will have it permanently.
If we don't go forward with this purchase, how does that adversely affect our future police department and/or potential municipal compliance?
We've already, yeah, we've already had a meeting with John Cooper and with Tom Judson. And they have agreed to provide P O A water for sprinkling purposes. And we will use Centerton water for everyday water. And Mr. Kelly is now talking to his legal counterparts in both the P O A and Cooper to put that deal together.
Cooper's already drafting a, a conditional agreement. It's all conditional, the bond approving. We've got a lot of things that have to happen.
Right, absolutely.
But assuming we get a good result in the bond election, then, then we would have something in place that would allow us to get access to P O A water to do the, the sprinkling that we would need to do in that building. And we're working on that. So that, that particular project has been addressed. And let me just add one, one quick thing too, before, I don't want to stop discussion at all. The resolution is to not pursue it. So just procedurally, so you know, when it comes time to vote, a yes vote is to say, I don't want to do this anymore.
We're also assuming that the motion is made in the.
Assuming you got a motion, a second to even bring it to a vote. You're absolutely right. It could die for lack of motion or a second.
Well, this, you know, I think it's, it's interesting, the timing of Gravit's interest in this portion of the Centerton water. This portion of the Centerton water district, or whatever it is, this line coincides exactly almost probably to the day that Centerton offered the sale of that portion of that water line to us. And up until that point, they weren't real interested in it, I don't believe, didn't seem like they were anyway. I don't know if there were any offers on the table for Gravit to purchase this portion that's been offered to us.
Gravit's approach to Centerton, I was at their utility meeting that that occurred, at least the initial meeting, was they wanted to buy the entire system of Centerton that's within their corporate boundary. So it reached south on 72 from Hawassee to the east, all the way west to Gravit.
When was the timing of it though?
Timing of it was started in 1517, early 17, late 16.
Maybe late 16, yeah.
Late 16, maybe early 17. It was shortly after the council here approved the.
I guess that's my point, right. They're not interested until it's been offered to us. And we had a resolution to go ahead and move forward with, with the intent to purchase. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, you know, talk is cheap on all sides right now, you know, to me. I just, I look at that area and I left the map out in the car, but our whole west side is surrounded by Gravit. You know, we have all these Belavista residents out there. And I've, you know, really the three points of exit and entry into the west side, Glasgow Highlands, Hawassee Road, and then 279. And there's going to be development out there. I mean, I don't know what the timing of it's going to be, but who's going to benefit from that? And essentially, you know, it isn't going to be us, it's, it's going to be Gravit.
Well, there is another perspective, Doug, and I've mentioned this before, is assuming we have the money, buy the land. Go to Tom Frederick's and sit down with him, buy his 21 acres, annex it into the city.
And that, that's great. I mean, we're having these conversations now, but you know, after this is gone, and will those conversations continue?
Why don't you keep it up as part of the whole water thing that I'm talking about? Because I've said, don't walk away from it as far as your discussion and your long-range planning. It could very well be very viable to say, you know what, I still think that there's going to be something happening there. But rather than focusing on getting the water, why don't we get the land so that if someone builds and puts something in there, then we get the sales tax.
That's all well and good, but none of this conversation of land has taken place until just now. We've been kicking this around for like a long.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Not with me, it hasn't taken place.
I had mentioned it at council meetings before.
Buying Tom Frederick's land?
Mm-hmm. I've said buy the land. On more than one occasion.
I guess I have to go back and look at the minutes and find it. I don't recall any, any conversation about buying land. But anyway.
Don't recall it since I've done.
Well, it has been since you've been here.
I don't remember it.
But nevertheless, the point being, the law is not with us on this thing.
Well, I read this document and it's, a lot of it's just murky. To me, it's muddy. There's not anything really there except for maybe this last portion. Them kind of, you know, coming in and having the, the possibility of basically kind of just taking it from us if we do agree to purchase it. We don't even know for sure that they'll even do that. One thing I will admire about Gravit is their willingness to fight for what they want. Right? We're not willing like to fight for anything. You know, we just want to roll over and.
Doug, it's pretty hard to fight against something when the law's on your side.
You know, I don't, I just say, you know, we don't even know that that'll even happen. We, we, we don't.
If I, if I have the mayor of the city telling me.
Well, sure, he's telling you that, you know, but we don't even know if it'll be taken from us if we do buy it. I just hear all the talking and all I know, I hear talking all the time, I mean, in all different shapes, form, regards, and I'm tired of all the talking. I'm just tired. I want to put a stake in the ground and try to unlock potential and move forward.
And that's what I'm asking you to do, is put a stake in the ground? You and I talked about this about two weeks ago, about looking, you said, that's great, I'd love to be able to sit in and finally do some long-range planning.
Sounds good, but that's just one, one part of like this whole and more broad, broad conversation, you know?
Then let's start it, Doug.
And the only reason we're maybe now beginning to have these conversations is because of this potential person, this water department, and us keeping up the conversation, doing the research, doing the background, doing the history, and trying to figure out how we can.
That's great, I'm so glad you've done it.
So I just want to move forward. I really want to get something done this time. I'm tired of talk. Talk is cheap.
So am I.
So let's, let's do something to really make it happen.
Put a stake in my hand and let's do it.
I think the reality, the reality is, is that some of what you say, Mayor, may be true. In that, based on the Mitchell Williams thing and the Arkansas. In that, based on the Mitchell Williams thing and the Arkansas Code, it says that they may purchase the system that's within their corporate boundary. It doesn't say we need to sell it to them, that's number one. It doesn't say we need to sell it simply because they want to purchase.
The state can force us to sell it. We have to enter into the negotiation. This is the, this is what the Grabit and Centerton litigation is about. The only thing keeping Grabit from getting it now is that federal 1926 protection, which we will not have. So the fact that they've been able to stop it, we would not have that stopped. And so, the law is and promotes cities being in charge of the water systems in their own city.
And I appreciate in the right depth of that case, and it's not something that's escaped me completely, but the reality on the other side of it is, is they, we need to negotiate with them for that sale. Part of that negotiation has a lot of latitude in it, not only what they pay for that system, but other provisions that are in there.
So let me see if I've got this right, you would still go ahead and purchase the system, and then within two years, you'd be back to negotiation table?
I don't know that that's a fact. I think you're telling us that it is, until it's filed in court, it's not a fact, it's supposition. So is yours, I know. I'd much rather go with the lawyers, who knows what's going on, opposed to someone who's not a lawyer. I understand that, but the law says that they can purchase it, but it has to be a negotiated purchase.
It is not a mandate that they purchase it, so in other words, they may not, they may never invoke that law. So to that extent, I would agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, so while they threatened it.
It wasn't a threat. I asked him, "What is he going to do?"
It wasn't a threat, but it was a statement of perhaps intent.
Well, back to Doug's point, if they're willing to stick it out with Centerton, you can be sure that if he says he's going to do this, he's going to do it.
If you look at the cost for them to provide a water source for that connection in Hawassee to pick up that portion, it's going to be a damn expensive cost.
They say they have it all engineered, and they're ready to.
I understand that they have a preliminary design, I don't know where the plans are, I haven't checked with ADH just for some middle of actual plans, but I know they did mention that when they met with Centerton Utilities, that they had an engineer on board, and they had preliminary costs and all of this. And if you listen to the costs that they recited, I don't know how they could manage the financing of that based on their current financial condition and user customer base.
That's up to them.
So.
Yeah, well, you know, and too, you talk about development out there, once again, I go back and think about it, police department, streets department, almost state-of-the-art fire department, talk about sometime in the future putting maybe our city hall out there, bike trail goes across right there at 279. There's a lot of reason for us to try to secure this water department and for potential development in the future. I read all this, I hear what you're saying.
No, but I'm going to tell you, one of the reasons why we put this police department and the streets department out there is because we own the land.
I understand, I understand, but it's also going to change the complexion of that portion of Bella Vista out there. And then when that bypass gets built, you know, again, it's already changing traffic patterns considerably, and it's going to even change them to a greater degree, but you know, you're going to have a lot more people when those facilities go in, and it's just, and who else is going to develop that corridor, other than Bella Vista? I mean, that isn't going to be Grabit's focus.
I think the real side of it is, is that this is the initial step, because our orange water.
You know, nothing worthwhile, you know, ever comes easy.
At least not in my life.
Most of the approval's on. Certainly, the ENRC hearing staff clearly says that the recommendation was to approve the Bella Vista request for service area. That would consummate that whole thing and allow us to move forward with the other planning that you've brought to the board, brought to the table tonight. Without that, you need to back up and start a new square one over the whole thing, which seems to me a unnecessary and a time-wasted fact.
Well, what I've been also told is we've done so much of the work already, a lot of it is simply repetitive.
Well, there's not much of it that is repetitive, because you're looking at how the service area along 71 will be accomplished, and you're suggesting that we'll just go down to talk to Bentonville, and they'll take it into their service area. We don't get a water service area without buying the Centerton system, is my understanding. That is the foundation of that approval binding in our seat.
So what's more important, Larry, providing the water for businesses for economic development, or to get a water area?
The answer is yes on both of those questions.
Right, it is, exactly.
They're both important.
Yes, they are.
And to get us, to get us in the position of being able to do something, the acquisition of the Centerton system gets us started on that tomorrow.
And then we lose it in two years. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know, it's not a business we lose it in two years, that's your pessimism or skepticism?
Or you lose it in four years. Why would you go through all this to simply turn around and have them come back and negotiate it away? It just doesn't make sense.
I wouldn't think we'd have to negotiate it away at a loss.
Why would you even go through with the?
I'm just saying, we don't know, right now, we don't, we don't know.
No, you don't know.
Matt, if I could, and I've appreciated the opportunity of the city council to really be able to dig into this complex proposition. It required extra time for me, getting up to speed, some of you guys have been studying this for over a year. So we have a process, we have the city council, and we're approaching a point of decision. And I suggest we let the process complete. We all, I think, should be prepared to live by whatever decision the city council makes. And I think it's the kind of proposition that really smart, well-informed people could disagree on in the end. So I suspect we're going to end up there, right? Not everybody's going to join unanimously on this particular proposition. But I think now, it's the process that we have before us, that in the next work session, or regular session, I'm sorry, that we're going to vote on this. And I think, I think, I trust the process, and I trust the other members of the city council that have leaned into this, that whatever decision comes out of that, that that's, that's the right, that's what we're going to live with, that's the right decision. And so, rather than get too much heated debate tonight, I think, you know, we save a little bit for our regular session, people to kind of restate what they feel like the value of the proposition is one way or the other, and then we follow through with a vote, and we make a decision as a council. So I think it's time to do that.
I agree.
Just one other question, with all the trouble we've been having with fiber optics, is there any snowball's chance that we would be able to bring a water line up 71?
Well, we would need to look at acquiring right of, potentially easements to do that, and that would probably be outside the highway department right of way, I don't think they're going to, that's a whole discussion we haven't started to have.
No, I understand.
But I think if I know the highway department, they're going to say, "Well, our line's here, and you're welcome to try and negotiate a 10-foot easement right outside that with the property owner to put your water line in."
Highway department will readily grant you an easement from the outside right of way to five feet inside of that.
Oh, okay, well, you know more about that than I do.
Well, in general terms, it will be that outside five feet is open for utility right of way approvals, presuming it's not already jammed full of utilities.
Full fiber optic cables.
Of course, Bentonville also brings up water on the other side, over by Lake Bella Vista as well. Maybe that is another avenue to explore.
You've got the old Bella Vista water system that's sitting there.
I understand.
It's a system with an area.
I understand.
That's something else that we would have to do as part of this, maybe, you know, we go back to them again. Perhaps things have changed, and they would be willing to sell.
Or we look at condemnation.
Yep.
It's interesting, yeah, I don't know where this even plays, and maybe we'll have another meeting before next meeting, you know, like we've been having, but I don't even know how much of a water system Grabit has, it's not much. I think it services their high school and maybe something else, but I'm just looking at their rates, and we were targeting the 4,000 gallon rate, because we're trying to do the math of what it might cost us if, you know, if we had to raise rates, blah, blah, blah. Centerton Utilities, 4,000 gallons inside, I guess Centerton City Clements is $33.95 per 4,000 gallons. Outside is $39.85 per 4,000 gallons. Grabit inside is $44.19, which is, I'm just going to say roughly, what, $7 higher per 4,000 gallons, and outside is $56.97 or $57, which is $18 higher per 4,000 gallons. And I don't know what they'll do with their pricing if they are successful in purchasing this, but it would be an indication that we might be paying for a whole lot more, a whole lot more for water, for a portion of that system is actually inside of Bella Vista city limits.
We would keep in mind, in addition to our purchase, if you move forward with this, and you go, and you said, "This is what we're going to do," separate from this will be a negotiation with Centerton for water, at a rate. And so, you know, any potential future, you know, dealings with Grabit in terms of them trying to take that back, or any of that, you know, our terms related to our source agreement are going to be in place, and that's going to be a part of that negotiation. So I would feel, I can't imagine that our cost of wholesale water would go up because of that, but I can't, who knows? The unexpected has happened in all of this, but I wouldn't expect it, but we also know Grabit might choose to litigate absolutely everything to their advantage. And that's not to say Bella Vista couldn't litigate everything to its advantage.
The reality is, from a utility standpoint, and this is historic and 45 years of experience, is having the jurisdiction for utilities and service areas is king.
Right. Keep in mind as well, and I'm not, this is a little bit of a different discussion, but it is pertinent, you've got this thing called Act 779. And what it says is, it allows a developer, if you're in city X, and city Y is adjoining you, and city Y can provide you a service that you need, like water or sewer, and the other city cannot provide that service, there's a process by which that developer can send notice to the city they're in and say, "Provide this to us, or give us a time for a period of when you're going to provide this to us, and if you do not, then we will go through a process of de-annexation from your city and annexation into another." The reason I ask about sewer, is if Grabit wants to bring a sewer pipe up to Hawassee, and we have property owners on the edge of our city, and they want sewer service, caddy bar at the door, because Grabit could come right up Highway 279.
Exactly.
Regardless of water, regardless of if you have the water.
For that reason, what's been mentioned before is that we need to be thinking seriously about sewer service on our west side.
Sewer, you need to think about all things, streets, sewer, water, when it comes to that situation.
Streets are pretty well cut and dry.
Well, let me tell you, in Springdale, I've litigated a lot of these, and there was a demand for a street improvement that Tonny Town did not do, and they are trying to get an Act 779 because Springdale would agree to improve the right of way. So it was just a widening of service. It is a very broad scope of service that that allows. Anyway, that gets us off topic a little.
And that's where Grabit is with Hawassee, in that sewer service commitment.
But we talked about west side of Bella Vista, we talked about Grabit expansion sewer, put that on your radar.
And what I'm really disappointed in is that 2040 plan draft that we've read is grossly deficient in addressing all of the needs we've talked about at this table tonight. Grossly deficient.
Okay, anything more?
Move to the chair.
There's not a finish, there's another finish, Larry. About three more hours.
Well, John has been here and very supportive, is there any reason we need to keep John here? Could we send him back to Little Rock, or we, you want to talk to him anymore about water after the meeting, or anything like that?
That would be.
Thank you for coming, John.
You're welcome to stay, John.
Is there anything that we missed that you want to tell us about?
No, I mean, the only thing that I would point out that I don't think's been discussed is I believe there's a deadline looming with respect to the Centerton agreement, and so if it's terminated, then there's an obligation to pay those expenses related to it.
There's a memo, and that's a good point. There's a memorandum in place, we have an obligation to repay certain expenses, there's a process, I mean, we may have to work that out with them. They're claiming some expenses now, and I'm not sure that the agreement calls for, that's a whole different discussion, but that would be implicated.
Yeah. But other than that, are there any other questions that come up, you know?
Thank you.
But your company's telling us it's not a good deal.
We're not saying it's good or bad.
According to the law.
According to the law, it's for you to interpret how you want it moving forward.
According to the law, they're saying we're at risk, we knew that before we got to this point.
Thanks, John.
I appreciate it. Guy, safe, if you're going back, watch the bridges.
We had a new business, we have the first resolution, which I mentioned earlier, supporting House joint resolution 1018 of 2019, and this is the half-cent sales tax for state highways, bridges, highways, Wayne is spelt wrong, and other surface transportation and city streets, et cetera, et cetera.
That's my fault, because it's probably that way, the title, he copied and pasted it over.
That's what I got from email.
Well, I had to type it, because it was, I'm sorry, so don't get Wayne on that one.
It's not a problem, we'll fix it.
Anybody have any discussion on that at all?
What's the projected increase from the gas fuel tax?
That's what I mentioned before, I don't know.
We have no idea what the thought is on that.
And why is the county getting an increase of $440,000 on the turnback, and we're getting nothing? And that's why I mentioned I have a call in tomorrow.
It should be a proportion, shouldn't it, from the county that we would get?
No, not on that.
Not on that?
There's 100% of the money, 70 goes to the state, 15 goes to the county, and distributed with the counties, and 15 gets distributed with the cities. It's in the law.
That's not the half-cent thing.
No, no, this is the gas tax. The half-cent tax is over $400,000 a year, at least it has been.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And it's about to end. So what you may gain from your three cents on the gas, if this doesn't pass, you're going to lose it on the other in a couple of years.
So it's going to be on the ballot a year from now.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll expire in 10 years.
Okay, the next resolution is setting the meetings for next year. You can see that we've had to do the usual shifting around to accommodate various holidays. Any thoughts or discussion at all?
Now, Christie, I just wanted to make one comment about the use of this room for our work sessions. Tonight, I think we had adequate space. I think there have been several times where our work sessions have been attended by the public, and this would not be sufficient space for it.
We always try to do it up at the court if we can, but tonight was the graduation.
Fair enough, fair enough, okay. And as long as that continues to be the process going forward.
The proposal was to have all the work sessions here, that was to move all the work stations here, I believe, isn't that right, Wayne?
Yes.
So it's calling for having all your work stations normally here.
In the resolution is?
Well, it's in the, it's attached.
It's in the schedule.
You know, one thing you could.
The only time we've exceeded what this would handle was during the stump-tump issue.
Well.
Other than that, we have never came close to what we could do here.
Fair enough, whatever issue we have, we had practically a full house tonight at the beginning, we've had quite a bit of attrition now, but I don't think it really facilitates the sense of openness that we want to portray.
I think there were four people here tonight.
Well, we had a full room.
We had your staff in here.
Okay, that's my point, and if four people were going to be ten, then we'd have standing people standing in here. So my point really is that I don't think this room is the right place for our work sessions.
sessions. I think the public should be able to attend, able to take a seat, not to be elbow-to-elbow necessarily with everybody else in the room. I think that's the kind of openness that we want for our work sessions. And so, I'd like for us to use the facility, the court facility that's available to us almost all the time to have our work sessions.
Okay.
So, if, if the resolution tries to specify where are the work sessions, I'm gonna object.
Well, I think amended to make sure it says what you want to say and let people vote on it. Or, one thing you could do is you could have it here unless you have reason to believe we're gonna have something, you would have the flexibility to either have it here or out there, kind of depending on the amount of the agenda or something. I mean, that would be a judgment call. But you can do it however you want. This is not a, you gotta do it one way or the other.
Designated place for each.
Well, yeah, I was delighted to see that you were talking about moving work sessions back here. I had numerous people that I've encouraged to come to meetings and they say when they go to the work sessions out there, they can't hear anything, so they've stopped going.
They can't hear.
Where, they can't hear.
Yeah, and that's why...
So, in this kind of a situation where we're all here and people are around us, people can hear what we're saying. And if they can't, have to go to a work session there, they can't hear squat.
My, that was my whole thing when, with bringing up the idea, and I mentioned it to, to the mayor first, that because we have a very difficult time taping the meetings out there, and now that we're required by law to take these meetings, even though the public is not allowed to speak at work sessions, we can do a much better job of recording what happens. And I looked, went back and looked, and the only time we had more people than what fit in here was during the stump dump issue.
Which, there were a number of work sessions around the stump dump.
Yeah, I'm just saying, during those months that that was there. But other than that, over the last five years that I've been involved, we've never approached...
This has always been sufficient. And you, we could always anticipate.
Yeah, and like Jason said, if we want to move it, it's easy enough to move it.
Now, we've got a whole bunch of chairs over there. You can put quite a few more on it.
I've, I've been here a little while and I seem to recall when, when we have a big crowd here is when it's election time and all the candidates want to come. And they're wanting to keep up with what's going on and so they would tend to fill the outside chairs and watch what's going on while the council was deliberating. And that's every two years, but that has been a full crowd in, in here. I do recall there being a lot of folks in here for that.
Chief?
There used to be in the Department of Training Room.
Yeah.
So, we're going to double and half size of this.
Yeah, it's bigger.
So, it can be held there.
That's a good idea.
It's a medium.
We can move it from here to there really quick.
Is there a likelihood of conflicts in your use over there?
Not as much as there is probably the courthouse.
You know, you schedule it earlier.
You just have to schedule it. As long as it's on the schedule, it shouldn't be a problem.
I just think it's really, I think it's really important, and I'll say it during the regular session, I think it's really important that the public feel like they have open access, that they can participate in this process if they choose, even though there's not a public input aspect to our work sessions. I think the ability for people to attend, observe, understand is really, really...
But you just heard her say, no one can hear you.
If they can't hear it, then they're not...
You know?
That's the real issue.
And we can always move if we need to over in our department.
Okay. If there's a better facility, I'm saying I don't think this one is of adequate size. That's, that's my point. If we have a problem over there with people being able to hear, we have microphones, we need to solve for that.
Well, then we need to go back up in the chairs.
Yeah. Go back up to the normal council configuration instead of the...
I don't care where we sit, how we sit, I just care that people can participate in the process and hear what's being said. And if it requires microphones to do that, I think we have it.
Let me, let me, let me say something in backup to what, work sessions are really not intended for debate at all. That's not what this is about. These work sessions are to learn what's on the agenda, to ask some questions, get additional information about something, and then debate it fully at your regular meeting and have, and have that opportunity there. I mean, there are no minutes to these meetings and a lot of what you say is very critical and important as to why you decide to do what you do. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I'm, I used to, I, I really don't want to harp, I don't, you really probably, all of you debate too much during these meetings and not enough during your regular meetings, but that, it's up to you to what you would say.
And I've, I've taken that point, David. I've understood that. And yet, if that's the intent, the practice is that much of the debate does take place here. And I've heard any number of city councillors who have said, if you really want to see the details, go to the work sessions. Because so many times during the regular sessions, the resolution comes up, it's already been discussed.
Y'all have already talked about it.
People vote and, and there's no insight, I think, into what all went into the making of that sausage. So, I'd like, I'd like to see us move more towards what we talked about, but in practice, much of our debate, much of the detail comes out in the work sessions.
You don't even legally have to have work sessions. Your, your ordinance requires you to have a monthly, regular meeting. And, and back when they started this, they didn't always have a work session every month.
Right. But if we're going to have work sessions, it has to be open to the public.
Absolutely. No doubt about it. And it would be, and we're gonna have a legal problem if we continue to have, want to have a meeting in here and 50 people are, can't get in the door. We, we have to be able to provide some access to the public. So, we, we're gonna have a problem if that were to take place.
And we could always move.
So, if we move back to the courthouse, is everyone okay if we go back to just our normal, regular meeting configuration as far as how you people are seated?
I'm gonna let you guys say it. What I'd like, before we go on, for December, what, if we, I'm just saying the 7th and the 14th, instead of the 14th, the 21st. 21st is, that's real close to Christmas and, and that might be my last meeting and I want to be able to be here. I don't want to be like somewhere.
Well, you're back to the calendar?
You've got the old calendar.
Oh, is it?
You don't have the one that came with the last...
Oh, did you update it?
This is the draft, yeah.
Oh, crap.
You're looking at the wrong one.
12:21 is a Saturday.
Yeah, those dates, those dates have been changed.
I'm sorry, everything's moving target. I was out after that was sent out and I didn't see it.
Okay. Ignore this one next Monday and look at the news.
My bad.
Steve, if they wanted to have work sessions in the training room, we'd all involve in getting the tables set up and the chairs around.
So, what are the dates?
We get it, we get it.
It's the week earlier.
Not a problem.
And Chief, since I've been in that room, you're saying it gets half again as big as this room?
It's about this room and probably half.
Yeah. Here's what, like all these things, you don't have to have 100% agreement, you can vote. And so, what I'll do is I'll draft an amendment for you to offer that says all of them have to be at the, in the court and then vote, and then if they say yes, then that's where they'll be. If they say no, then...
Does the location have to be on the actual resolution?
No.
For the work session, probably not. It would be nice to be...
Just put it, we're gonna meet at a time and date and then we'll just figure out where to...
Absolutely. Yeah, I see the name.
I mean, it is, I guess, helpful for people's room scheduling going on to the next year.
The scheduling stuff.
Of course, we can play by year.
Yeah, that last one.
Always do that.
Well, you emailed out.
Yeah. Well, we'll check it.
I'll pull this off the website just for what it's worth.
We'll have the right one and then post it on the website. This, well, and I apologize because we did change it.
We deal with a lot of paperwork around here. It gets a little...
I guess so. All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is establishing the commercial and residential trash rates for next year. In the contract that was signed in 2013, the rate is based on the Consumer Price Index for sewer and water, which worked out to be around 4% and we got it down to 3.5%. So, this reflects 3.5%. It's a 49 cent increase per month for the residential. I must confess, I don't know what it is.
It's still, it's the same percentage added.
Same percentage.
What didn't change was the billing admin cost of 90 cents and the street...
And the street per 50.
Or the 50 cents.
Did we resolve the issue?
We did. I, I started all that because I, they were just saying you need to add this and I don't, I'm not gonna do that just because they said so. So, it had to do with how we put the columns in for that 90 cents and that 50 cents to make sure that it's appropriately reflected. I wanted to make sure that that was set out and not already included. It just, I had some questions about it. We've got it all sorted out now. So, as it is there, it should be, they've understood and agreed and that's it.
When we first started doing this, I guess around 2013, this is the way it...
Yeah, at some point it changed.
And then it changed, I think, the next year. For some reason, they dropped the two columns and their audit is one of the two columns back in again. Okay, the final is, oh, a five-year lease agreement with Larry Vandevor on the CDS space and there's been no increase. It's, we'd be renewing at the, at the current rate of $2,200 a month.
Which is a $50 increase.
Is it 50?
Yeah. It was $2,150 for the first time.
I shouldn't say current rate.
Well, then it must be worse, because I went back and looked at what it was and it, the new one says 2,200, but it was 2,250 a month when we first entered into it.
So, it's 50...
So, $50 less?
So, they reduced it by 50.
No, it was 2,150 and now it's 2,200.
Oh, all right.
Can I say it backwards?
But it is, the proposal is for $2,200 a month.
Yes, right. And it was 2,150 when we first did it.
For the first lease?
Yeah.
The current arrangement, yes, which expires at the end of the year.
December 1st, I think it says.
Would be valid from December 1st, 19 through the end of November 2019.
Ends this month. I'm sorry. So, we need to do that.
We're content in that space and ready to re-up for another five years.
I don't see a...
Instead, we can put a box out back and get it set in there.
Yeah, we've got room for a couple more offices if we need it.
Just random a pod. We don't need a funeral trailer.
Doug, take us through the, the Central Trails, please, followed by Sunset.
Central Trails, this update is as of November the 11th. Did you all get the email today with the details on the tunnels? I don't know if Wayne kept it.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read through that or I can just give you a summation? 71 underpass done, Chelsea Road tunnel done, Highlands Boulevard tunnels complete, those are all awaiting topsoil, seed and straw. Collin Hills, the same, two tunnels on 279. Have some work to be done with utilities before those get started. Bridges, Gordon Hollow Bridge is the project that they're working on right now. And then, Lake Windsor Bridge will be next and then Sugar Creek is on down the road. And then I think they're gonna circle back and hopefully begin work on those tunnels after they finish the bridges. And there's one, one tunnel that is still up in the air on whether or not it will actually happen depending on budget.
Which one is that?
Uh...
I think the last one down.
Well, number six, Fort Hills Boulevard, that's holding until the remaining tunnels are installed.
That's it.
I suspected that was the one that was more children's affordability.
Oh.
And Doug, what, what does it mean in the opening paragraph? Will you remind me what the BNP, what that stands for?
Those are the, those are the erosion control measures, waddles, fencing, silt fences.
Stands for best...
Those are the things they'll put in place to prevent, to keep dirt on site.
And so, the city wants to inspect creekside BMDs?
Correct.
What does BMD stand for?
That is best management practice. Best managed practice for erosion control.
So, the city is looking to sign off to make sure that these places are being finished out the way that they're gonna be sustainable when... The stuff is credited to our, to our stormwater permitting. I mean, we have requirements, yes, we've got to.
Stormwater management.
The state and the feds are very, very critical of that.
And it's the city's responsibility to...
We gotta make sure people are complying, even on our own projects. So, yes.
Sunset, Doug?
Sunset Road, as I shared with you the last meeting, their count, Dr. Hull's council had to recuse themselves because they also represented GTS, the engineers on the project. Got an email, reached out to the new council, Todd, down in Fayetteville, and as of today, Baldwin and Shell and Dr. Hull are at odds on who's responsible for repairing the slope and the road. Baldwin and Shell has filed an insurance claim and their attorney told me to call the president of Baldwin and Shell moving forward for any updates.
Really?
Yes. Mr. Kofus, this is...
I will also add that in my conversations prior to the attorneys recusing with the other attorneys is that the POA is being mentioned in this because of work they did on the waterline in that area. And so, part of the dispute from the, from the contractor architect side is that, well, if they hadn't done that with that waterline, then everything we did would have been fine. So, it's turning into a, a big pointing match between these three.
Which I thought got resolved back when it happened.
Well, we have, we have certain requirements we're gonna put on them to get this done right and it's not cheap and, and so...
Is it still the city's position that they will not be issued a certificate of occupancy in terms of where it's fixed?
That could run.
The attorney's aware of that.
It is, just, I'm gonna advise you, I don't, I don't suggest you do this, but they've damaged our road. We have every right to go in and engineer a fix and pay for it and sue somebody. But if we go and engineer that, that gets into conflict with the engineering that's already been done on the building, part of which is the retaining of that slope. I think then we do something that does something to their building, then we're involved in that litigation. I do not suggest we do that. Even though the road is closed, there are alternative routes through there. It has not been that much of a disadvantage to the citizens out there. We don't, I don't know, we get complaints about it being closed. We get calls about what's going on out there, but I don't think it's about I can't get to my property. So, my suggestion is we let these folks play this out and they have every incentive to get it fixed on their own, dark standards and let that happen.
I have a question. Maybe everybody else in here knows, but somebody else maybe would like to know. Medical. So, obviously, any type of retail sales or whatever, you know, we have our 1% sales tax and the county has theirs, state has theirs. So, how does medical get taxed? Like a Hull or a Mercy or...